Good evening. The January tenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Dearborn Board of Education is called to order. Whatever brings you out tonight to battle this cold weather, I want to thank you for joining us. You are welcome, and we want you to know that you are welcome. And we also want to thank you for your interest in helping us provide an exceptional public education, education experience for our students. May I have the first item, please?
A call to order, roll call, and pledge of allegiance. Trustee Barry.
Here.
Trustee Di Ambrosio.
He's absent.
Trustee President Roxanne McDonald.
Here.
Trustee Moszep.
Here.
Trustee Pechlikov.
Here.
Trustee Thorb.
Here.
Trustee Irene Watts, here. Pledge of allegiance to the flag. Mr. Mahmoud Abu Ross, Principal of Oakman Elementary, will introduce students who will lead the pledge of allegiance.
Good evening, President McDonald and trustee of the board, Dr. Maleko. I have an awesome family from Oakman. Over here, we have, introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Susu. I'm in fifth grade and from Ms. Bazey's class.
Hi, my name is Ali Ishwin. I'm in second grade and I'm from Ms. Lowell's class.
Hi, my name is Zain, and I'm from Ms. Ms. Farah's class and in kindergarten.
Okay, are you ready for the pledge? All right. Go ahead, lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well done. Come on up here.
Thank you.
I have something. Come on up. Go see that lady right there. I have something I would like to give you. Zain? Thank you very much. You did a wonderful job. Ali?
Good job, Zain.
Good job.
Very well. And so on? Thank you very much. Well done.
Good job.
Superintendent's update. Moment of silence.
So I would like to start. Good evening, everyone. We had the passing of a great man, John McDonald. And I know it's our counterpart. We have Mr. Cavalluna here from the college. And so just wanted to take a moment of silence for him and his family. And I know he served many, many years at the college and for his leadership in the Dearborn community. If we can just take a moment, please. Thank you, everyone. So I'll just, is that okay if I just go down?
Yes, please.
Commissary President, thank you. Congratulations. Oh, go ahead.
I also would like to send my condolences to all those who have lost lives in the past, especially in the past month with so many COVID cases. It is with heavy hearts to see that many people depart and leave us. Difficult times, for sure. My grandmother passed away. Luckily, not from COVID, but she lived a very long life, over a hundred. And this past week, and it was very difficult for me to, since I was very, very close to her. So I, my hearts are with people I've seen. When we buried my grandmother, we saw other people at either the morgues or at different places. We had many family members who were too early to depart, too early. And I recognize the fact that we are part of making very tough decisions. And sometimes it could be, you know, contributing to the, to sometimes lives where we're making literally decisions that impact our lives. I would ask people to really think about when they go to gatherings that we're still in a pandemic. If you're willing to think for yourself, please think of others. Others who may have family members who have health complications and that you may touch and you may give them this virus. We're still, scientists have done an amazing job by giving us a one of weapons, which is the vaccine, to vaccinate ourselves. Now, many others have many different ideas, but I would say just be careful. Whether you're in gatherings, close gatherings, making sure that we wash our hands for all of us, students, staff, in our schools. And obviously, this is going to be a very important topic of discussion today in various places. But I ask everybody to think about these situations. I was really humbled to see so many families just in really, really tough situations when they depart. People because somebody contracted this virus and they're still in their thirties, and they did not deserve to die this early. And thank you.
Next item, please. Agenda items?
Thank you. So I will go down, I'll start with retirement. We always thank and congratulate our employees. We have Mohammed Bazey, over twenty-five years of service, and Virginia Pascaris, over twenty-nine years of service. So I want to congratulate them and thank them for their years of service, please. If we could show of knowledge.
Next item?
No agenda items.
So I'll just go down each of the bullet points on there. Thank you. Just wanted to start with our COVID response. You know, coming off of the break, I put out several communications. We have a database process that we are implementing. When we're looking at data, we're looking at school level data. We're looking at classroom, school, and district level data related to COVID-19. We're aware of data in the community, hospitalization rates. And we'll continue to look at that data when we're making our decisions. A lot of times, we may have schools with cases and then other schools with none or very few. And so that is the approach we've taken, and we're going to be consistent. Of course, we know that the health and safety of the students, staff, and school community is the number-one priority. But we also understand that in-person instruction is also a priority. And so we're balancing those needs, and we'll continue to look at that data approach to make sure that we protect the community and provide quality education for our students. So just to report, and I put this communication out, you know, the attendance was down a little. And you know, we're being very transparent. It ranged between eighty-one to eighty-six percent of student attendance. We did have elevated staff absences that we're dealing with, which we anticipated. We all knew in the new variant and the virus that we would have to deal with it. But it's nothing necessarily out of the ballpark of what we've dealt with over time. And I've put some of that out in my communication. Having said that, it is extra stress on staff. We have staff all over the district. Most of the central office staff has been in buildings. We have building staff that are in different classrooms. We have building staff that are dealing with different classifications of jobs. And so it's kind of an all-hands-on-deck approach right now, and I appreciate our employees do it, doing that. I also know there's stress on phone calls coming in to our staff in the office and other places. So I appreciate the great work our secretaries and our frontline workers do. And so we understand it's out there, but we're, you know, those staff members that are stepping up. We have our nurses, we're doing our testing and our COVID testing that we're increasing. And all of that is to increase our mitigation to keep students in school. And so I want to thank the staff for that. Our rates, when we look at overall the district, you know, with the district our size, I want to clarify this too, and I have for the board, that we report all cases that we keep track of if they're reported to us. That includes students or staff that may not have even stepped foot in a building. However, if they weren't in the building, they're not considered a close contact, so they're not on the dashboard. But we're still aware of it. And I want to thank parents, actually, because the parents, the last two breaks, really did the right thing for the most part, overall, from what was reported to me. And I want to thank them and the students because we did, not that we want anyone to get COVID, but a lot of them did the right thing, and it was reported to me by the nurses by reporting cases, but not coming into the building, getting tested. And I know it was hard to find testing out there. So I do want to thank everyone who came together to support that mitigation. We are continuing with our vaccine drive. And CSIST is our partner. Ms. Barry, she reported to me the clinics that we ran over the last little bit. Over seven hundred-plus individuals received the vaccine. We are planning through Mr. Salee to schedule more vaccine clinics. And I've been outspoken with advocating for that as a mitigation factor that we all need to, you know, consider strongly in the community to protect everyone. The district will be implementing the mandatory vaccine or testing under federal law that is coming up. We're going to start that in February. And thus, we've also expanded our ability to test. When I heard over the break, I know there was a shortage out there across the nation, across the state. This is a national issue. Thankfully, we've entered into a partnership with Vibra Health Lab. There are several, and we have it on the monitor, several labs that priority will be given to Dearborn School students and staff for PCR testing. This is symptomatic or asymptomatic, and we want those in the labs outside of the school. We don't want to do them in the school. We will continue, however, with our asymptomatic testing in the schools with students. And we've partnered with another group, United COVID Response, and they will come in. We are also going to continue to get our test kits from the state of Michigan. Although I can tell you, there's a bit of a shortage right now, so there's some delay in some of the orders coming in. Those are free, and we have our nurses and others that are trained in testing. In fact, I want to thank Ms. Candace, who has personally trained me for testing. And I've been able to do that even in the office, if necessary, to protect everyone. And just, it's more data sets when we, you know, can feel either secure or take that extra precaution of not coming to work or into school when someone may be a close contact, you know. So those are some of the things we're doing. We're also limiting group sizes in alignment with the letter that came out from the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services and Dr. Weiss, the state superintendent. We're going to continue to do that as well and just continue to tighten our mitigation. I can tell you, I was in multiple schools this week. Again, I am going to say there is some stress among staff and students and everyone. I also know that we still have eighty-plus percent of our students coming in, and we know that in-person instruction is best. When students saw me, and if I, and the truth is that the majority of students that I've seen where I've been and staff, you know, are wearing the masks. But there are some times where we're not, they're not wearing appropriately. It's being addressed. I've given direction to administration and all staff to make sure we address it appropriately, you know, be polite about it, but it is a method. I've put out one-minute messages. We do, it's not required, but we do have, in the district, we have a stockpile of KN-95 masks that are available. Again, not required, but they are available, and I've seen them distributed to students and staff in the district. And again, that's just another way to enhance our mitigation to keep students in school. Moving along. Oh, yes, go ahead.
Yes. Trustee Barry?
I am so proud of this team, the work we've done the last almost two years now. Dr. Maleko, and your team, I can't say thank you enough for what you've done. For when we're on break, not everybody knows this, but the team came in together numerous occasions to make sure everything was in order and our plan is working. There was a huge district in our area that closed down for a few days to figure out how they're going to open up the schools. We had a plan. We've had a plan in place, and we've been following our plan. For almost eighty-four percent of our twenty thousand-plus students to show up on Monday, thank you, students, and thank your parents for trusting us. Staff, thank you, thank you, thank you. Teachers, we love you. Almost ninety-two percent of our twenty-seven hundred staff members showed up to work on Monday. You see what's happening with the national discussion right now? So I want to say big thank you to the staff and our teachers. What's happening right now nationwide, we're not going to be able to solve it. Everybody's, everybody's so divided on vaccines and masks. Now, the latest thing I heard was, you know, what type of mask you're wearing, if you're wearing one or whatever. Nobody's perfect. But again, I am very, very proud of Dr. Maleko's team, very proud of this team, all the work we've done. The best, the best kind of relevancy that I've heard this past couple of weeks was we, school board and administration, are flying the plane at the same time, trying to make sure to maintain it and fix it and see what's happening, what's wrong. So it's very, very difficult. So there is a lot of stress on us, there's a lot of stress on me, I'm sure there's a lot of stress on Dr. Maleko. This is not easy. We are responsible for, like I said, twenty thousand-plus students, and we take that very, very, very seriously. Sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair.
Trustee Pechlikov?
Well, I also want to make a statement as well. Number one, I do want to thank Dr. Maleko and his administration and all of the staff. We've been in this for, going into our third year now. Nobody anticipated this when the pandemic occurred. We have had to balance the needs of staff, parents, and students for all this time. And it's been a tripwire of an event that we never felt we were going to have to deal with. And there is not one person in this room who isn't doing the very best, with the very best of intentions, to protect the school environment for every one of our students and to ensure that we have a successful school year. That being said, we handle a lot of data. And a lot of that data I see getting misinterpreted because there are so many numbers out there. And every time we say we had eighty percent attendance, people are assuming the twenty percent who are out are out due to COVID. And that's not the truth. They're out for a variety of reasons, many of which parents weren't, were either not comfortable with sending their students to school, they were out ill with something else, for whatever reasons. But we don't have a twenty percent COVID rate here in the school buildings. That is not what we're experiencing. So I wanted to clarify that for sure. We handle a lot of information over time, and I know it gets misunderstood because of that. And I want to make sure that instead of people just repeating something that they see, that they do their homework, be critical thinkers, and make sure that they understand the information that they're digesting and not just jump to a conclusion because somebody else has passed it along on social media. So that being said, I want to make sure that we all understand that there isn't anybody out there without the best of intentions in order to keep our buildings open. And I just saw several reports today on national news that this is the way to go about keeping our schools open. Doing a room-by-room, school-by-school, and then you look at a district-wide issue instead of just assuming that you need to shut everything down and call it a day. And we know that we've gone from one extreme to the other in the expectations from our community as to how we should approach this. And there isn't a one of us that has that answer that we can give that is going to satisfy everyone because the information changes on a daily basis. And we're all just, we all just hope that everybody has the compassion and humanity to understand that we are doing our very best with the best of intentions.
I want to add something in that vein. Our students, there is no question in my mind and other minds that this is the safe place for them to be, in schools, because of the mitigation programs that we have in line. They are warm, they are fed, they are safe, they are learning, they are thriving. This is the place our students need to be.
They're being emotionally supported throughout the day.
So thank you. Trustee Moszep?
Thank you, Madam President. I also would like to echo both of your comments, Trustee Barry and Trustee Pechlikov. I would like to also thank the nurses. I mean, oh my God, they've been doing an amazing job ever since we, we never knew how much they do behind the scenes, and now their work is just in front of us. And it tells us how vital they are to our schools. Whether we, moving forward and keeping schools open, I think we all agree that in-person instruction is the best method for, for instruction. And that has been proven in the past two years throughout the whole country. There are some, also, Trustee Barry, there are some districts that their busing unfortunately broke down because many of their bus drivers had to quarantine for weeks. So they did not have the capacity. And I appreciate the Mr. Store's letter to the parents, letting them know heads up from now, hey, we are also experiencing a lot of issues where we have some staff who are self-quarantining because they've been exposed or they tested positive. Seems like the science here is definitely helping us in regards of the vaccine. Get the booster if you can. It really, really helps, it adds your antibodies. You, think about it, that you're just filling up on antibodies. Test yourself if you have antibodies. I worked at Belmont for three years, and I was part of the response team that prepared the mobile applications, the web applications for the vaccine app that many of you used. And I'm really proud of the work that I, the small, that small work that I did and the serology study before that at the onset of COVID, which helped a lot of patients actually survive and live because they get plasma of somebody else who had antibodies. So vaccines, I'm not here, obviously, as a scientist to advocate for vaccines, but I feel very strongly and passionate about it. Obviously, every parent's, I still have that conversation with my family about vaccinating our kids. We still haven't came to that conclusion, but I hope that we do in the near future. Because the, we're going to stay, this virus is going to, we have to really know that this virus is going to stay with us for a very, very long time, and we have to know how to deal with it. We can't just hide in our corners. We came to that conclusion, and I believe it, last year.
Thank you, Trustee Moszep.
And I want to just add one more thing, if I may. The continuous testing that we're doing, Dr. Maleko and partnering with other organizations that can help us do continuous testing and doing this contact tracing and self-quarantining and advocating for the vaccine is what's going to get us out of this situation, where we're going to have students fully back in the classroom, students participating in sports, and we have the normal, the new normal that we're looking forward. I actually started playing sports with my kids this past summer, and I continue to do that cautiously. But we really, in order to do that, we have to be responsible. And I've already said about how to be responsible, and we need the entire community to be responsible. And unfortunately, I've seen many irresponsible things, especially when it comes to masking or just straight up, especially in our schools, not taking these precautions seriously. So thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Moszep. Dr. Maleko, if you'd like to continue?
Thank you. And I appreciate all the comments and the support of the board. And just so everyone's aware, which has been out in my communication, if necessary, we are ready to move to online. That is not our preference, but we are prepared to do that if necessary at this class, you know, building, excuse me, building and then last resort district level. So school safety was the big thing that has been on everyone's mind. And again, we've been very proactive with school safety. This is not related to COVID. This is related to other potential emergencies. Obviously, we had a vigil that our students put on to remember those who suffered in Oxford. And so I want to let you know that we've been very proactive with this, and we're going to continue to move forward. We have our Alice training, and we have worked with our crisis team. And we're going to be looking at not only having the video training, the in-person, but I know Mr. Leacher was out for a tabletop exercise at Etzel Ford today. And we're going to have some of those at every building as we prepare and move forward with our training. And what will happen at the end of the month is that we'll have all staff. It'll be a different day, but we have some professional development days coming up on the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth in the high school on another day. And so each of those levels will be using some of, most of that time to go through Alice training, building safety protocols, and finalizing their crisis teams within the building. So I just wanted everyone to be aware. And when individuals put out emergency drills, there are required drills that must be unannounced by state law. So although we were trying to be very sensitive, we've told principals when they do it to let their communities know that there will be drills, and they, we won't be able to pre-announce that they're, they're practice drills. So we don't want people to panic, but that's the reality that we need to implement those drills. So I wanted everyone to be aware. And tonight, we do have an item on the agenda for supporting our safety in schools, for the board action item. I have two other things. We came off the break, and I hope everyone had a happy new year. I know it's been a tough year for a lot of families and a lot of individuals with COVID. But it was nice that we were able to shut down the district pretty much for two weeks. And so I hope everyone had a time with their family and friends, and they were safe going about it and coming into this maybe a little bit rejuvenated as we're dealing with the stressors of coming back to school and all the things that come with it. So wishing everyone a happy new year. And the last thing that I have under other is just that we continue to move forward on looking at a potential for possibly upgrades or a bond in the committee that everyone in the community was given the opportunity to apply. And now we have meetings that will start this upcoming Thursday. We start with those meetings to have a discussion, to see what may come from that committee and the recommendations. I will be at the first meeting, and I will be speaking to the group. And then it'll be the committee with a lot of community members. So we appreciate those who applied and those who are going to serve on this committee. They have several meetings scheduled over the next couple of months. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Maleko. Next item, please.
Recognition and acknowledgements?
Dr. Maleko and Madam President, I would like to also thank the people who signed up for that committee. Their work is going to be so crucial and so essential for us for next, for this November, if we were to go forward with the bond or asking our taxpayers for their support again. So I would like to thank them for their time because they're going to be dedicating a lot of their time and their effort and their expertise into this. Thank you.
Commendations?
Hi.
Hello. Make sure that you introduce yourself, please, because I do not have a list of what your names are.
My name's Nisrine Maroo.
And my name is Hassan Barry.
Commendations to Mike Salee, Director of Special Education. Mr. Salee was recently recognized as a champion of equity access. He was nominated based on his leadership in implementing a new framework for social and emotional learning in the district that provided teachers and support staff the tools they needed to help students during the pandemic. The nomination also noted his innovation in finding ways to provide equitable access to special needs students during virtual education.
In terms of high school, commendations to Dearborn High Instrumental Teacher, Mr. Brian McCloskey and the DHS Jazz Band. The group performed at the Dearborn Country Club for a group of school leaders from the metro Detroit area. Those in attendance were very impressed with the students and made several glowing comments to Superintendent Maleko and about the performance. Congratulations to the DHS Thespians on their tremendous showing at the 2021 State Thespian Festival in Lansing in December. Eighteen students attended the event and came down and came home with fourteen Superior ratings and medals and two certificates of excellence in the competition events. Honorees include Marissa Adair, Oliver Angel, Ren Betty, Thomas Bisek, Simon Boyer, Kayden Brier, Savannah Capote, Rebecca Deere, Luke Dover, Nadia Gilani, Shay Murphy, Julius Coleman, and Alexandra Slanek. I'm sorry if I butchered any names.
In regards to elementary, commendations to- In regards to elementary, commendations to Oakman Elementary School for raising $1,100 to donate to the fire, Dearborn Fire Department burn drive. The school surprised firefighters with the check when the department came to give a presentation to the school. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well done.
Acknowledgement of donations.
Good evening and Happy New Year. Echo.
A donation of $2,388 has been offered to Long Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a sound system. A donation of $4,150 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for Inside Out Literacy Arts. A donation of $730 has been offered to Salina Intermediate School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for birdhouses for outdoor learning. A donation of $550 has been offered to Michael Berry Career Center by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for a budget challenge. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Long Elementary School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for books to expand selections. A donation of $326 has been offered to Bryant Middle School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for academic games awards. A donation of $1,524 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for athletics in partnership with TE Connectivity. A donation of $1,042 has been offered to Fortson High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for athletics in partnership, oops, I read that one twice, oh no, also, for TE Connectivity. So there's two of them, two different amounts. A donation of $565.23 has been offered to Dearborn High School by the Dearborn Education Foundation to be used for the battle against hunger. A donation of $100 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by the Dearborn Ed Foundation to be used for a family in need due to a fire. A donation of $500 has been offered to Dearborn Public Schools by Kim Nicholson to be used to purchase gift cards for the monthly staff appreciation program. A donation of $250 has been offered to Miller Elementary School by First Book to be used to purchase books. A donation of bagels, doughnuts, coffee, cake, and water has been offered to Dearborn High School by the school, family, and Fairlane Alliance Church to be used for a staff appreciation breakfast. A grant of $250, of $750 has been offered to Michael Berry Career Center by the Michigan Youth Education Fund to be used for HOSA students for expenses at the state competition. A donation of $1,000 has been offered to Salina Elementary School by Home Depot to be used for outdoor learning. And that's all.
Thank you so much, and thank you for, to everyone who made those donations. Next item, please.
Gavel presentation.
So it's my pleasure to be the one presenting and acknowledging our board president from the last year. It's, he's done an outstanding job. I know that Trustee Barry came in on the front end of the pandemic, and that was a tough year. Jim, Trustee Thorpe has been there throughout the the main part of the pandemic, and now I look forward and congratulations, President McDonald. I hope this is the back end, meaning we're on our way to put it in the rearview mirror, or at least deal with it on a much lesser level where we always will have students in school for in-person instruction. So I just have to thank Jim for his great leadership throughout. This has really been the toughest challenge I can say in my career, and I think a lot of us can probably say in our lifetime. And Jim was there for me, for the team, for students. He's always been data-oriented, always looking ahead. And I want to use this quote because, not because I'm a hockey advocate, but it's because of one that he recited to me several times. And this is from Wayne Gretzky, "I skate to where the puck is going, but not where it has been." Meaning, we're always looking ahead and preparing for the unexpected and where we need to be down the line. And Jim did that for me and my team throughout. Although I will say, I do like it because of the hockey quote, but if you know me. But Jim, that was Jim. Honestly, always looking ahead, lots of communications. As the board is aware, multiple communications. And we have a system where, you know, the superintendent and board president collaborate and decide there's one kind of voice going out from the board. And so it would be left up to the board president and Jim for communicating. And a lot of times taking, you know, workload off my plate or dealing with things because we were so busy to keep students in school. Appreciate his guidance, all of the leadership he exhibited. And I just want to thank you, Jim, for taking us through the last year. I know all the trustees, I know are appreciative, the school community. We really owe you a debt of gratitude for the great work. And I know my counterpart, President Cavalluna, would probably be here with me saying the same thing, and he'll have his turn next week. But Jim, I want to thank you, and so I'm gonna come up and you have your gavel. And I will say, the one thing that was always in my mind, and it did help me, I was always Jim in my ear saying, keep it brief and to the point on my commentaries. Now, sometimes it was my fault, but sometimes in fairness, it was trustees that helped extend those commentaries. But we work as a team, and that actually helped me refine my process. The one good thing is I never did get hit by the the gavel while I was there. But I know we had a couple of tough meetings too, where he had to take a pause, and he wasn't, you know, shy to take leadership and do what was necessary for our students, our staff, and our school community. So, thank you, Jim.
So while Dr. Maleko is heading over there to present that to you. I too want to thank you so much for your service, Jim. You've been a wonderful leader for our team.
And I'm not letting him get away. He knew it was in my pocket.
I'm always smiling.
And wasn't that nice in person? Because you and Jim, remember last year, it was on the virtual.
It was a classic. I remember your response to that one.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please. Board appreciation.
So that is me as well. It's Board Appreciation Month, and I want to take time to recognize our outstanding board team that we have here in Dearborn. I know that we have some goodies for you as well, so hopefully you enjoy that. And just a few, a statement I'd like to make. Board of Education members develop policies, make tough decisions that help shape the district now and in the future. They're responsible, all the trustees here, for the third largest district in Michigan with an annual budget of $336 million and enrollment of 20,000 students, 2,700-plus employees working in 36 buildings across the district. In addition, board trustees also serve as trustees for the Henry Ford College. My counterpart there, President Cavalluna is there. They are the only school board trustees in the state that also serve as trustees for a local college. This dual responsibility means trustees spend twice the amount of time dedicated to serving the community. They evaluate both the superintendent and the college president, and must keep abreast of issues, laws, legislation impacting both grades, preschool, the 12th, and the college. Thank you for your outstanding service to the school community and for your dedication to our vision, students first. I will take a moment right now to list each of the trustees, and then we can hold our applause to the end in our recognition. We have Trustee Irene Watts, one of the three trustees who won election to six-year term in 2020. Her term expires in 2026. This is her second year on the board. Trustee Adel Moszak was initially appointed to the board in April 2019. He also won election to a full six-year term seat in 2020, and his term will expire in '26. Trustee Mary Petlicoff also won election in 2020, and is scheduled to serve until the end of 2026 as well. She served on the board for 11 years. She was first elected in 2006 and served from 2007 to 2010. She returned to the board after being elected again in 2014. Trustee Roxanne McDonald, now President McDonald, congratulations, was, served eight years on the board after being elected in November 2011. She did not serve in 2017, '18, but was re-elected in November 2018. Her term expires in 2024. Trustee James Thorpe, our outgoing president, has served five years on the board after being first elected in November 2016 to a partial term. He was re-elected in November 2018 to a full term, which expires at the end of 2024. Trustee Pat Dambrosio was the fourth candidate elected in 2020, winning a partial term on the board. He took a seat with the board in December 2021, and his term ends in 2022. Trustee Hussein Barry has served on the board for 10 years. He initially served from 2010 to 2014, and was elected again in November 2016 to a term which lasts through 2022. Let's take a moment to recognize all of our great trustees.
And I was just told that one of the blue cards that were turned in pertains to board appreciation. So we would like to call up.
President Russ Calvahuna.
Thank you, Mrs. Madam President, trustees, board members, and public servants. I have a few comments about Board Appreciation Month, and the reason I'm making these is because the board that you serve on with the trustees at the college doesn't have this month. So I think it's appropriate to make my comments now, and I appreciate, Madam President, you taking my public comment now because it's most appropriate to what the superintendent just addressed. I have a job here in Dearborn that is a relatively public job, but I'm speaking as a citizen and as a parent of the school board or a person who takes your public service as a school board. And I, my comment regards what I've had the opportunity to to watch, and that is part of my job is to watch you all and your work here. And I also am interested in public education, and I'm also interested in public leadership. And I want to comment to to you all, but more to the broader audience who watches this board along with me over the last two years. My comments relate to what our our public discourse has turned into and what this board has done for this Dearborn community during what this public discourse has turned into. You board members have asked to be leaders of a public school district, which is big and controversial, and no one feels sorry for you. But I do think the public would benefit from understanding what it's like to watch what you all are doing. And to just have some context. This is hard work that you're doing. I've watched you all do it, and I've watched that the public has scrutinized your decisions as they should. And they've asked why, and they've asked how, and they've, in many regards, told you that they don't agree with your decisions. All of that is appropriate. In a government and a system of ordered liberty where we're allowed to disagree with each other without harming each other, that's appropriate. And you all have held up well in that regard with three leaders and all of you elected trustees. But what also has happened over the last two years is that you've been criticized in what I think has been unfair in many regards. And you've held up well under that also. It's okay that some folks may not like the decisions you've made for our children in our public school district, but it's not okay that they question your motives. It's not okay that they've questioned your truthfulness. It's not okay that they've questioned your morality. And they have done that. Now, I'm not here to say we should all feel sorry for you, but what I am here to say is, as a parent, you held up well under that criticism. I've watched you. You haven't fired back, and frankly, you're defenseless here when people are criticizing you publicly and personally. And you've continued to try and serve our students. That's hard. You've done it well. And we, as parents, appreciate it and see it. So keep it up, and I know you won't make all the right decisions. Frankly, I count myself lucky when I'm in the 70% right. But the truth is, I know each of you and you're good, honest, moral people. And I've watched you put up with difficulties, and I've watched you do your best, and this district is better for your effort. So happy Board Appreciation Month.
Next item, please.
One thing if I could just mention too, I want to mention, and we may have other staff members, but we do have a staff member, Dan Taylor, who's school board trustee and centerline. So I wanted, I did receive an email from his superintendent. He's a teacher at Fortson, so we want to thank him. And anyone else that may be serving as board members, not only locally, but across the state, we appreciate the work you do. And the nation, for that matter. It's been a tough two years, as President Cavalluna stated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Staff recognition.
We have Ms. Ali Bazey coming up to lead this, and this will be our second month of, or actually several months of this program.
So this month is, we would like to recognize our grounds and our trades department. And so Matt Ozinski, the supervisor of trades and labor, and Mark Andrews, the director of operation, will be saying a few words. And we'd like to welcome the grounds and in trades gentlemen that are here. Come on up.
Good evening, Board President McDonald. Board trustees, Dr. Maleko, and thank you on behalf of the entire trades department for this opportunity to speak. It's an honor to represent our district tradesmen this evening. It wasn't easy to choose just a few members of our department to honor, as all of our tradesmen have worked tirelessly over the years to keep all of our school buildings in the best and safest conditions possible. It wasn't easy to choose just a few that have gone above and beyond more than their peers. Our team, in my opinion, goes above and beyond every day to meet the growing needs of our district. Honestly, our entire team deserves the honor to stand in front of you this evening. However, I'd like to honor the following members of the team with a special recognition. First off is Robert Baranowski. Rob is our lead HVAC tech. He's a great asset to our district, not only when it comes to the day-to-day operations, but also with the current COVID climate in making sure our classrooms and offices are properly ventilated. Thank you, Rob. Next, George Gilbo. George is our lead electrician, and until a few months ago, was our only electrician. Not sure how he did it, but he was able to keep the lights on at all 35 of our buildings with little to no help. Thank you, George. And not last but least is Brian Kelly. Brian is our lead groundman. Brian has taken the grounds crew to a new level. Our district's grounds crew, under Brian's leadership, has taken on many additional responsibilities while keeping all their normal workload. Thank you, Brian. These three individuals are a great representation of how hard our district operations team works on a daily basis. And I just want to thank you again for providing this opportunity to acknowledge the hard work of our team.
Absolutely. I want to take just a moment too to say thank you very much for your work, your grounds work, and your skilled trades work is definitely important to our our district. And a lot of times, we've been in situations where we were in just a bad state. And thank you for coming to our aid and making sure that our buildings are running and that things are are done well. And I can speak for Trustee Petlicoff and myself. We both have a warm spot in our heart for tradesmen. We're both married to skilled tradesmen. So thank you again for your work.
If I could, I just, it wouldn't be right for me to not say a few words for these three gentlemen.
Absolutely.
With time being sensitive, I just want to point out, I couldn't agree with Mr. Ozinski anymore. He said it well. The one thing I want to point out is, when vendors come to our district, they always come to me with the same thing. And it's like, wow, you guys are so fortunate to have these guys on your team. My answer is always the same. I couldn't say it any better than you. I couldn't agree with you more. So it's a pleasure for me. These three gentlemen rep- rep- our whole department well. But as Mr. Ozinski said, there's, there's a big team behind them, so it's my pleasure to be here tonight. So thank you.
Absolutely. And if anyone's interested, we'd like to get a picture. Board members, if you'd like to join.
Madam President?
Yes.
I know, uh, obviously thanking everybody uh who uh works for our district, especially during these tough times. I uh wanted to ask, um, how, if this not, might not be a, the better position to ask this question, maybe later. If, how are we measuring the mental health aspect of our staff and how well they're doing under all of these pressures? Uh, maybe that's another question I'm going to ask it later, Dr. Malenko, just for thoughts. But go on.
Is that okay? Okay. Um, so uh if you recall, last month, we started the, uh, we had, we explained that we had asked our staff to nominate their colleagues. And then we did a, every month, we're going to draw ten names from the nominations um to get fifty-dollar gift cards, so nine fifty-dollar gift cards. These gift cards this month are donated by SFE, our food service. Last month, they were donated by Kim Nicholson. Um, and we have one hundred dollar gift card. And so I'm going to read off the names. These people have been, the staff members have been notified. And then for the sake of time, I'll only read one of the nominations and then we publish them in uh the first bell as well. Hallie Valeras, uh, resource teacher at Miller. Christina Randazzo, a developmental preschool teacher at Lin, Lindbergh. Amy Modica, principal and coordinator of early childhood programs. Reyna Regal, um, is a virtual learning program teacher, I believe. Nadine Mackled is a teacher at Lori K eight. Suzanne Thomas, Suzie Thomas is an art teacher, virtual art teacher now. Miriam Deklala is an ELD, English Language Developer Development Specialist, I should say, Miriam Deklala. Sosin Baydun is a teacher. Hala Ramal is a teacher and Kathleen Adams is also a teacher who's a special ed teacher. Um, we had about nearly seven hundred entries and we have a wheel, an electronic wheel that we spin. And that's how we, we choose the winners. Kathleen Adams is the hundred dollar winner, so she was excited to hear about that today. Um, and I would like to just read one of the nominations, Miriam Deklala. It's actually two, two separate nominations, both for Miriam. Miriam Deklala is a very dedicated teacher in our building from helping with after-school activities, intervening with students who are English language learners, stepping in to present at meetings or helping students' families. She was always willing to go above and beyond. Miriam Deklala is one of my biggest supporters. She always has a smile and is willing to help out. She is a great listener and her students love her. Congratulations to all the nominees that we selected and uh thank you, Miriam, as well. Thank you.